Okay, good evening. It's a regular meeting of the City Council and the Needles Public Utility Authority, the City of Needles on Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. The five o'clock portion of the City Council meeting was recessed by the city clerk to five-thirty. The mayor and the council members may be attending this meeting via Microsoft Teams. Expect Mayor Williams to resume the meeting at six o'clock as he's declaring a conflict. Call the roll call.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Merritt.
Here.
Pageant.
Here.
Belt.
Here.
Longacre.
Here.
Thank you.
Recessed the executive session. Dale?
Conference with real property negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point eight. Agency negotiator, city manager Rick Daniels or his designated negotiating parties are the City of Needles as a potential seller and Elks Lodge as a potential buyer. The real property described as one point one seven acres located on Lily Hill Drive west of the Elks Lodge, APN zero one eighty-five dash three three one dash two two dash zero 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 under negotiations of the price and terms.
And, Your Honor, what was the conflict that Mayor Williams declared of the reason?
He lives within the distance of the real estate being discussed.
Okay, within five hundred feet of that property.
Yes.
And Councilmember Belt also has a conflict?
Correct.
Because?
I live within five hundred feet of the property.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't want you to hit him, John.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. How you doing?
Good.
Good to see everybody tonight. Sorry I have been sick and unable to come to the meeting, so I'm glad I missed some months to get here for this one. So, we're gonna start the meeting, calls me. It's a regular meeting of the City Council, Needles Public Utility Authority, City of Needles, California, Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. We had a five-thirty executive session. I had a conflict of interest because it's directly across the street from my property. So, I didn't participate in that, but we'll have a roll call first.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Merritt.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Pageant.
Here.
Belt.
Here.
Longacre.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, and please rise for invocation and pledge of allegiance. Do bow with me. Dear Lord, thank you for letting us gather and take care of us today's business. Please let us keep what's best for the entire community and keep you on the forefront of our minds as we make these decisions. Dear Lord, we ask you please be with everybody that's been ill and getting better and we pray that we don't lose any more of our citizens and more friends. Lord, we ask that you please be with each of us and help us with our lives and moving forward and making the right decisions. Love you, Lord, and we ask you please be with us. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen. Vice Mayor Pageant's gonna lead us in Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in saluting our glorious flag. I pledge allegiance to the product of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Feel a little bit out of practice. What's on the agenda?
I'll move there, Phil.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Call for a vote.
Yes?
There was no reportable action from closed session.
I was getting to that.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm sorry. See, I'm out of practice. Okay.
Councilmember Campbell. Does still vote for the?
What's on the agenda?
Evans.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes. What?
Pageant.
Yes, you have practice too, what the heck?
Longacre?
Yes.
Our voting lights aren't working, that's what we have to do.
We got you.
Vote.
Okay, I didn't know that. Thank you. Are there any conflicts of interest? I reported mine closed session. Any other conflicts?
Your Honor.
Sir.
Conflict of interest on agenda items seven, eight, ten, eleven, twelve. They all relate to cannabis and I work for a cannabis company, so.
Seven, eight, ten, and twelve?
Yeah, I think we pulled twelve, but it was still cannabis, so I added it to the list.
Okay. Lord.
Not the cannabis, the not.
Tony?
I just recuse myself. I just recuse myself for the closed session because I live within five hundred feet of the property.
I apparently have a conflict of interest in item number two, the Chamber of Business.
Yes, sir, sorry.
I also have a conflict of interest, item number two.
Okay.
And they've indicated before that that's, I think Councilmember Evans indicated because he owns a piece of property with one of the board members of the chamber. And Councilmember Pageant's indicated that he has conflict, I think because his spouse, his wife?
Yeah, my wife is a volunteer for the Chamber and therefore there's possibility of a conflict and I don't want to cause any problems.
Okay, thank you. So, is there any correspondence?
Yes, Your Honor, we have a late applicant for the Park and Recreation Commission. Cindy Melvin has applied.
Oh, you sent us that email, right?
Yes, I believe I distributed a copy for application to everyone.
Thank you.
And then we also have correspondence in opposition to one oh nine North L Street Public Hearings from a Tim Assavis, Damon Axelrod, Adria Cocker, and Joseph Foner, Twyla Walker, and Richard Williamson.
Okay, thank you. To get down to public appearances, person wishing to address the City Council on subjects other than those scheduled or requested to do so at this time and called by the members, mention your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-month timeline, per person has been established by the Government Code Section two v. eighteen. Amendments to the California Government Code Section five one zero, prohibit the City Council from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. With that, sir. You go ahead and give your name and address.
Logan Knox, twenty-four oh two East Palverdi Drive. These packets handed out are two different pump tracks in Las Vegas, one being poorly built with a great layout, one being built great with a poor layout. My main reason for bringing these to present to you is so we can correctly implement the pump track for all ages, bikes, or skateboards for years to come and not just opening day. I also want to talk about painting the boxes and such. Yes, it's a great idea, but no, I don't think it's a great idea for this project. As one, it can be too sticky or too slippery if you don't use the correct paint. And two, we can instead pressure wash the already painted white sections and bring the natural park concrete back to life. That also ties in with the street section idea that could include colored brick or a red brick layout to go with the nice one-of-a-kind view. Mount Rock Incorporated, as well as Street League Skateboarding, are two great companies that specialize in these parks with skater knowledge. As we add both the pump track and hopefully more obstacles to the park, I would hope you all consider the idea for an indoor skate park that is a recreation option to teach the community from A to Z on any board, scooter, or bike. It also doubles as an opportunity for the city to benefit from one, some watch over all the soon-to-be additions because it's a lot that we're adding. And hopefully they won't be vandalized as they are now. And two, being able to bring visitors from all over for being unique in every aspect, from the pump track to the park to the street section as well as the indoor. And then, as well as, I've been talking with a couple companies from the river and we were wondering if it'd be okay if we threw any competitions here anytime soon, if that's any like, if that's okay or if there's any issues with that? Yeah?
No issues, yeah, go ahead.
And then, also like if we have people, because we have someone that would come from out of town and a couple people from California, how I assume Vegas, they also have like, they sell food and stuff like that, but they'd be giving it for free, but for like donations and such. Would that be okay?
Well, I think we have Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Rick.
Logan will get ahold of me. I'll identify what the requirements are. Any consultation of that.
Yeah, if you make sure you give the contact information, we'll set up a meeting, all right, and talk about it. We can't do it right here.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Take loads.
Good.
Sheriff Johnson, thirteen twenty, Santa Fe Circle. It's good to see you again, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Good health. I'm gonna say stuff that you already know. What happens in our community affects our community. What you guys decide to do with this community either influence that community, and I'm talking about micro-communities, Somara Heights, the gates, different areas. They all are many communities. I know everybody on the next three streets around me. I know what's happening in my neighborhood before most of the sheriffs do. We all know, we all talk. What happens in these communities affects the whole town. Not only today, according to your old master plan, according to your current master plan, what you decide will affect for generations. What you do to these communities, what you allow to happen to these communities, will affect for generations. My grandkids' kids will be living with the effects of some of the decisions that are made by council.
Can you speak into my, I can't hear you.
Okay. So, I ask when you evaluate these communities and what you're doing in them, what you're putting in them, what you may be allowing to be in these residential neighborhoods. I ask that you consider not only your current plan, but what's gonna happen in twenty years? What's gonna happen when some of these big buildings or twenty-four-hour units or whatever is being affected and put into these communities are gonna affect them how far down the road? And some of these things are eyesore, some of them are smelling other issues, but some of your decisions will affect for generations. It can either influence that community and allow it to grow, or it can affect the community members so much that they will move and leave. Some of these communities, these houses are paid off, they've been here for generations already. And so, the decisions that we make here today will affect people for many generations to come. And I ask that you, I'm not saying any of you don't, but I ask that you would review these packets, you would take a look at the communities and you, I know you already talked to people, but that you would seriously take into consideration what we want to see in the future in this town. And what these communities are, how they're gonna be affected and what's gonna happen in these communities and that we try to get them to thrive. The Green Mile's not getting any shorter, it's not getting any longer either. That is what is referred to in their community now from Circle K all the way down to the end. That is the Green Mile. We already have people saying we don't want it on Broadway. They're starting to show up on Broadway. So, what we do in our community is gonna affect us for generations. And I ask that you would consider that and think about where the city's gonna be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Jones and I live in Needles, eight three seven Beach Drive. The Needles Museum, today we rebuild our mural, but we don't really have a actual unrebuilding or whatever because it was already out there. So, we wanted to just give you a picture of our beautiful mural and and on the back after that is some, just some information on Needles and what the mural represent, represents. Our hope is not only to promote the museum, but also to promote Needles as a whole. The museum or the mural consists of the history of our area. There's a cowboy, the US sixty-six sign, the Santa Fe Chief Train, the Needles Peaks, the Old Trail's Arch Bridge, and spike hitchhiking to the museum. So, we were thrilled today because after a few people put it on social media, Supervisor Paul Cook thanked not only us, but thanked the artists for the project. So, that was fun. So, our project was funded by the museum's membership and donations. When we started the mural, it was said on social media that the mural was paid for by the city. So, I just wanted to make it correct, correct, that the museum isn't subsidized by the city and so we just wanted to get that on record. And so, I wanted to tell you a little bit about the museum. We opened in September and so far for the last four months, we've had roughly six hundred visitors. And we have a sign-in sheet and so not everyone signs in, so we're figuring that it's more than the six hundred. But we've had almost, someone from almost every state and we've had visitors from ten different countries that had signed in. We've had Germany, Guam, Ireland, Costa Rica, Canada, Monaco, New Guinea, Argentina, Australia, and France. So, we are really excited for that. And I wanted to tell you a little bit about what the museum is up to. And right now, we've teamed up with UC Riverside and UC Riverside is trying to save the history of California through the newspapers. So, we have sent all our newspapers into them and then they send them onto newspapers dot com, which is a program that you have to pay for to join. But after three years, they'll be on UCR's website for everyone to enjoy. So, like I said, so they're trying to save the newspapers. So, we contacted, we were in contact, the museum with Barstow. So, we were able to help them get theirs on there. And right now, we're working with a publisher that had a that had a program or newspaper for a few years here and we're trying to work with him. Have a couple with him.
Yeah, please.
We're also working with the California Parks Department concerning Mitchell's caverns. They're trying to find old pictures and old postcards and so we're trying to work with them on gathering information for them. We're also working with the Needles Tourism Group and they are starting to conduct, got my mind went blank. They're starting to conduct tours of the El Garsas every Saturday. So, they, they sign up, they can sign up in the museum, but then they meet in the museum before their tour. And so, the people that are going on the tours are able to see the museum and then the tourism group takes them on to the El Garsas. So, the marketing that we've been doing for the last couple of years is starting to pay off. And if you've never been to the museum, stop by. And one of our, one of the museum's goals is to do our part to make Needles a place to stop.
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Email public appearance. Seeing them will move on. As a courtesy of those who attended, we'd ask you to set your cell phones into silent mode, please. Number one, interviews appointments to fill vacancies on various boards and commissions due to resignations and/or expiration of terms.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, we have remaining four vacancies on the Parks and Recreation Commission and one on the utility board. In your packets are applications that we received as of Friday when the packets were distributed from Merlin Willis, from Suzanne Flores, and from David Upton. Additionally, today, we received notification from Cindy Melv. I know Ms. Torres isn't here, but if there's any of the other people that.
Merlin's here. Yeah. Oh.
Okay, so.
Okay.
So, if you want to bring them forward.
Can you?
Okay.
First, first app.
Hi, I'm Merlin Willis. I've been living in Needles for about fifteen years. Love this town. It's been very good to my wife and I. We have several kids and grandkids that live here and we'd like to get back to the community.
Does the council have any questions for Merlin?
Thank you.
You know him.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you, Jeff. Yeah, thanks, Merlin.
Thank you, Merlin. I'm sorry. Suzie? Suzanne?
Suzie works. Hi, Suzie, how you doing?
Good.
Good. Would you explain why you want to get on this position, I believe?
I've lived in Needles my entire life.
Please, thank you.
I've lived in Needles my entire life. I'm mom to seven, for which attend middle school and the elementary. And I would like to help any way I can to make Needles great for their futures.
Super. Anybody have any questions for Suzie?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The third applicant was David Upton.
Hello, my name is Dave Upton. I lived here in Neal for seven years. I'm interested in the Park and Recreation Board just to see, you know, how I can be involved in what kind of issues they have going with that. You know, I used to ride skateboards and stuff, you know? And I think that it's an interesting experience for me and, you know, for my future. Maybe I'll put it in a resume or something.
There you go.
Thank you.
Any questions for Dave?
No.
You're good, all right. Thank you.
The fourth applicant is Cindy Melvin.
Is she here?
She said she'd try and call in if she couldn't make it, but.
Yes.
Melvin, are you on the phone?
I see nobody's raising their hand, are they?
Mr. Mayor, because of state law and sensitivities of being with, around kids, we require adults to do a live scan, a background check. So, on whatever members you appoint, we will ask them to do the live scan, which gives us a background.
How many vacancies do we have?
There are four vacancies.
We have four applicants. Seems pretty easy. So, to the council, you gotta make a motion to decide what you want to do here.
I mean, I don't have any financial facts. That's my mother that's applying, right?
It's your mother? Oh, that, that one's, okay, so maybe not all four. I'm kidding. Like your mom, I was joking. She gonna pass the background check?
Yeah, she's already.
Okay. All right.
John, Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
John, one of the applicants is Councilman Belt.
Doesn't matter. Nope.
No, it's, there's no, there's no, I mean, she presumably lives in her own home and, you know, is not a dependent of you. So, no, there's not a conflict. And plus, there's no, there's no compensation for these positions. So.
Right. Okay, so we need a motion?
Make a motion to approve all four.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Call for the vote?
We have various ex-term expirations. One expires twenty twenty-five, two terms expire twenty twenty-four, and one term expires twenty twenty-three. Any preference on?
Nope.
You want twenty twenty-three?
Can I take a minute?
Okay.
What's twenty twenty-three?
Thank you.
You've seen things you don't like it? Thanks, okay.
We'll do, we'll do it.
Just fill it in.
Okay, all righty.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Pageant.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, don't we have utility board or something?
We did.
Apply.
But we'll, we'll.
We haven't.
Keep hunting.
Ties again and.
Okay, that's it then, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We do have to reappoint Norma Jean Williams to the Cemetery Commission.
Let's do that, too.
Make a motion, open point Norma to the Cemetery Board.
I'll second it.
Okay, call for the vote.
And Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Pageant.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, number two, extend the Chamber of Commerce lease agreement with amendments. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash sixty-nine, amending resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two, approving amended lease agreement with the Chamber of Commerce for the offices located in the historic El Garsas train depot.
Your Honor, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the extension as it is to, it's to July. And go forward on this with this, with their schedule. They have a schedule, they have a written schedule and we have a report that's going to be given tonight.
Okay, motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, further discussion. Does the chamber want to give their report now and then we'll vote?
George, what you doing? Six twenty-seven, good. Mayor, I'm glad you're looking good. Hope you're okay.
I'm good now.
Ready to go. We have a timeline. We have a project manager, full steam ahead. Now, I have in front of me, I did my homework and I should have done it earlier. I'm referring to our contract that I signed, Jeff and I signed in April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. And it has that clause, because we were using the term, we were in breach, the Chamber of Commerce, and we were not in breach. If you read the contract, it gives exemptions. Those exemptions are basically the pandemic material shortage. So, beyond that, that's okay, but now we're going full steam ahead. Okay, we're ready to go. You have a timeline. My project manager's gonna speak with us, but currently, as I understand, simple language, this contract is still in effect. Okay, so we are not in breach. Any questions for me before I hand this over to my subject matter expert?
Yeah, I have a question. So, we have, we have a timeline now and we did have one before. So, how are you gonna meet the timeline this time, even though we were told before timelines didn't matter? I was in meetings, so please explain how this timeline will matter.
That's a perfect question. Project manager?
Can you remind me of another president? Push it to somebody else. Somebody else's fault. Thanks, George. Or Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Daniel.
That worked. It's not Joe.
Honorable Mayor Williams, members of the City Council, City Manager Daniels. My name is Steve Cropsey and I live at nineteen sixty East Aguaview Road, Mojave Valley, Arizona. Though I have had eighty-four residences in Needles. I built fifteen oh one and sixteen oh one Lily Hill. And I mentioned last time I spoke that the last time I had been in this council chambers, when it was in the middle eighties, when the City Council actually approved the sale of that property to me to build those apartments on. But anyway, a lot of time is, a lot of water under the bridge, but I have a little report that was kind of, there was some discussion earlier about just the location of the office might not be appropriate. There was some discussion about moving the office, flipping the plan and moving the office to another place in the west end of El Garsas. That area, by the way, is over ten thousand square feet. And it's not just a matter of saying, well, we're gonna move twenty feet down the, down the hall. It would be actually a whole new set of drawings, which we probably could get discounted because a lot of the legwork is done. It also would mean a new building permit and it would also mean adhering to the most recent building codes because they've been adopted by the city. So, that wasn't really an easy. So that wasn't really a, a, an easy solution, or one that wasn't going to cost anything. That I, I calculated in my report, it would have been twenty-five thousand that the chamber was in, but I was told there was six thousand that had been spent on the architect, when they increased the square footage of the process, of the project uh, to the twelve hundred and seventeen square feet. And so that wasn't included in the twenty-five thousand, so it's actually thirty-one thousand that the chamber has invested. Plus, there's been labor and materials provided by volunteers, uh, and donated uh, to date, and those folks did that in good faith. Uh, the question was, how are we gonna follow the timeline? Okay, well, in fact, we are on a timeline, and I'd like to tell you we're a week ahead, or two weeks ahead. It, we, we were supposed to pour concrete on the tenth. Uh, and, no, we're supposed to pour concrete on the twentieth, and we actually did it, uh, excuse me. We were supposed to pour concrete February the fourth, I think. And we actually did it January the twentieth, so we're a little ahead of the schedule. But the, uh, project is pretty well defined. I think it's been resurrected to the extent that, uh, there are people now that are stepping forward and saying, yeah, we're, we understand it's a, a real deal, and we're willing to donate, and we're willing to contribute. I gotta say that the people that have contributed and donated so far have been outstanding. I've managed millions of dollars of construction projects in my career. And these people, these contractors have operated as efficiently as if they had been being well paid according to Davis Bacon wages. And believe me, I've been strict with people that were well paid, and I haven't had to be strict with these folks because every one of these subcontract, every one of these contractors has performed fantastically. If that's a word, I'm not even sure that's a word anymore. But anyway, they've performed very well. Uh, I can't see. Uh, and at the, uh, so to answer your, get back to your question. On the seventh, we had an inspector look at the project and ask for more rebar. On the eighth, which was a Saturday, we installed all the rebar according to what the inspector asked to pour the concrete back. On the tenth, the inspector provided his, his, uh, sign off. And on the twentieth, we had concrete poured. And on the twenty-first, uh, the steel, uh, the framing steel material has gone out to bid. So we are on our schedule, uh, the one that we have recently presented. Um, in conclusion, unless there are some more questions, I'd be happy to answer those, but.
Any more questions?
I, I, I put, uh, July the eleventh on the completion date, as a completion date.
For construction.
For construction. I, I, are you ask, I'm sorry, I don't have any responsibility for moving into furniture in, but if that's what you're asking.
But you'll have a COO on that date. You'll be ready to move in if you're not already moved in by that date.
I did ask for, I did say we're, we expect a COO on, on Jan, July the eleventh.
Any other questions? Go right ahead.
I have another question for George, but he's not up there, so.
Well, George, would you be okay to answer the question if you can?
I have one more question for Cropsey. It says unknown on some of these resource names. Um, what is, what does that mean? So we don't know who those contractors are at that point?
That's correct. We're early in the project.
Okay.
We don't know who's gonna hang the doors yet.
Okay.
Things such as that.
The electrical.
But it, it, the interesting part about this project is as it moves, there's more interest in helping to make it move along further.
Yeah.
So I don't, I can't tell you who's gonna hang the doors, but.
Or do the electricity. And, okay, thank you. And then I have a question.
George, 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 see?
So, um, yes, you are right about the contract. Absolutely. I noticed that. It's unfortunate because you did say in the meeting that you, the pandemic would not be used in as an excuse. And we are in a pandemic, but, and unfortunately, I don't know how it got into the contract, but it did.
And there's another word in there also, it's short, uh, material shortage.
And I understand that as well. And I, you also said that those things weren't gonna be an issue. You'd be ready, you're shovel ready, and you're ready to break ground. So what's changed? I, I do see that you guys are working down there. I see that you guys, which was strange, because last week, two weeks ago, you said that you're slowing down because you didn't have the contract. But I felt quite the opposite. I felt like you guys have really moved forward.
I used to term we were dragging our feet, and that's correct, and we were dragging our feet. But to answer your original question, was our biggest difference is standing next to me. Now, we got a guy that's in charge, that's taking over, uh, the board of directors. Are we good guys, good girls? But construction wise, we're a bunch of yahoos. We don't know what's going on, but, uh, we've got a professional here, and that's what's gonna make a difference.
I love you, Pam.
I can say everything, sir. I just, I just, we have a hotel going up, down the road, who, they're all getting paid, and they're three or four months behind. So company, this happens. We give extensions all the time. If we looked at every single marijuana business on there, I can't tell you one of them that's gone up on the day that they said they were gonna go up. So this is not abnormal. I mean, we do this all the time. So I'm, thank you guys for getting in there. Thank you for wanting to come into El Garcias. I mean, I know this is we're working, I know this is taking a long time, a long process, and yes, I want to see it come. And I'm, thank you guys for doing it, and thank you, Steve, for joining their team, and I look forward to this.
Well, thank you for the, that comment, and we, we are having an issue with materials. We've ordered, uh, framing material, steel framing material, and we, we're, we're not expecting it for a couple more weeks. So there are issues, and even though George says that, you know, nothing can happen, something can happen. And if something does happen, we won't tell you on July the twelfth, something happened. If something happens, I'll be back and visit with you and explain, so that you are posted and up to date all of the time. And, uh, Councilmember Belt, you must, I was wondering if you were looking at my notes? Because I was going to say that in conclusion, uh, I've worked with, with school boards, I've been their employee and, and cities. I've been there, I've always been their employee and their owner's representative for construction projects, as the project, as the project manager and quality control person. But I've never, never in my and I, I have more history in this business than I care to admit, because I'm seventy-six years old, but I've never known of an individual or a, a body collectively voting no on an extension when it wasn't gonna cost them a nickel.
Correct, exactly.
So anyway, with that, that's all I have to say. I hope you're comfortable that we're gonna get this done. We are gonna get this done.
Yeah.
Yes, Cropsey.
Your honor.
George.
Is that still public, or are we going to our?
Not in public yet.
We're gonna go to our discussion?
Yep.
Yeah.
Can you explain the new amendments to this to me, please?
Yes, yeah, I, I can do that. Okay, so, uh, the gentleman that spoke, spoke first was referring to paragraph twenty-one of the original agreement, and I wanna, I wanna start there. Okay, the original lease contained what is typical in a contract, which is a force majeure provision. Particularly given everything that we've experienced in the last two and a half years, uh, force majeure provisions are even more important. You know, we all experience things getting shut down, et cetera. And so, like most lease agreements or contracts, this contract contained a force majeure provision. And it provided that notwithstanding anything to the contrary contained herein, neither party shall be held liable or responsible to the other party, nor be deemed to have defaulted under this, under or breached this lease for failure or delay in fulfilling or performing any term of this lease to the extent and for so long as such failure or delay is caused by or results from causes beyond the reasonable control of the affected party, including but not limited to the following events that actually directly impact the project. And then it lists, and I'm just gonna list some of them. Disease, contagion, pandemic, material shortages. Um, the chamber, uh, prior to the last council meeting, did submit a letter indicating that the delay in part was due to, um, the pandemic. So that provision is in the existing agreement. What this agreement does is it changes that section, uh, section twenty-one, and it now says, uh, the amendment, that section twenty-one is stricken and replaced with the following. Now it has new language. It says, "Time is of the essence. Notwithstanding anything to the contrary contained herein, time is of the essence in regards to this agreement, and each and every provision and term and section of this agreement as amended. Under no circumstances will any extension of the timeframes in section eleven be allowed or permitted in spite of any practic, impracticability, frustration of purpose, force majeure, or other legal theory allowing for the extension or delay of a party's contractual obligations." And section, what does section eleven say? It basically states that they have to have the certificate of occupancy no later than July eleventh, twenty twenty-two, the commencement date. So that, in the language, and, and the intent of the language is, this is a drop dead date that the typical force majeure provision is removed. There will, there will, there will be no further extensions regardless of the reason of delay. And, and, you know, it would be good to have a clear understanding on the record with the chamber that they understand that, and they're willing to abide by that.
Now, hold on, George, hold on. Wait a minute.
Thank you, John.
I, uh, I've done this kind of work before, and there's no way in hell I would sign that contract out as a chamber. There's no way. You can't do that. Why wouldn't we add that in there? Whose idea was it? I'm sure it wasn't the chamber's. It forced it to stay in the contract.
Okay, thank you.
They have no, uh, building right now. You heard it's gonna be at least two weeks before they get any metal in to do framing. That's out of, out of their control. The pandemic, and we've got a, I'm not gonna get into politics.
Well, well.
We have some bad decisions being made right now. Pandemic, that's out of everybody's control. So why would we do that to the chamber?
Well, mayor, we, we drafted that language, and, you know, I apologize if it was misguided, but the sense was that folks wanted to have a firm date by which things would be done, and you can change the date. It's listed as July eleventh.
Yeah, yeah, I'd love to have it done yesterday. But I can't hold their feet to the fire either, when it's not, it's out of their control.
But you could, you could change the date.
You can change the date.
Yeah, you could change the July eleventh, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two date to whatever date you all agree upon.
So it's not a drop dead date then, for you to change it?
Well, you can change it, you can change it in this agreement. Okay, instead of July eleventh, twenty twenty-two, you could put whatever date you all agree on. But this is intended to be a drop dead date.
Right.
There's clarity in terms of when they're supposed to be completed with the project and the CO. So if they came back to you in July, on July first of twenty twenty-two, you can always amend the agreement if you choose to do so. But it would be clear that they wouldn't have a contractual right to just continue this on without any closure or date certain for completion. But you could always amend the agreement if you felt that it was appropriate to do so at a later date.
So if I could guarantee them that the federal government's gonna open the United States up on July first, then we can do something like this, and it'd be good, but nobody has any idea when they're gonna let everything go back to normal, so we can get some stuff done. It's just, I just don't get it. Alan, did you have something? I'm sorry.
Two things I want to say. One, um, speaking, we just had a fire. We just had an arsonist go in there and start a fire in that building, and God forbid, someone else. We have an issue in that building that's been brought to our attention. I don't know what is, what we can do about it, but those doors unlock at night because of the train.
Yep.
The train arrives here at night, and I don't know if the citizens of Needles know that those doors unlock.
Yep.
And people come in. Anyone homeless, homeful, good intention, bad intention, can get into that building in the middle of the night. And if we don't have security in that building during those hours, anybody can hide in the bathroom and decide to torch the damn place. And that's exactly what just happened. Okay, he's in jail. It was found. There was not substantial damage, and we are lucky. We are blessed by God that that building did not go up. And forget about the chamber and the visitor's center. It's the El Garcias. What would happen, I mean, it would be so astronomical. So that's one of the things we need to address, is what are we gonna do to secure that building? I mean, we have tours going on. We have people being responsible, taking people in and out of there, working really hard to have it all gone because some, somebody decided to go move in there and start a fire to keep warm. That's how we lost the California Hotel. So I watched that building burn. So I would like to change my, my motion, from the amendment, to we accept the, we, we grant the extension shooting for the completion date of July eleventh. That is what we're shooting for, that that is what we are expecting. We're hoping not for any, I don't know how we want to word that, that, that that's the date we're, we're going for.
Mayor, can I propose, can I propose some language, listening to the comments? Um, what I would propose is the following. In the, uh, on page two of the amendment, right before the words, "Under no circumstances", you could add the following. Absent mutual written agreement of the parties, comma. And so that leaves the possibility that if it's not gonna be done by July eleventh, that they can come back. Otherwise, it's not in the interest of either party that there's no completion date, and then it just goes on forever and ever. I mean, that would mean that if things aren't getting done, you know, if there's delays due to supply chain or COVID, et cetera, or something we don't even, can't even foresee right now, that they can come back to the cha, the council, and you can, by agreement, extend the deadline.
Thank you. I will make my emotion to accept, to grant the extension with the change that absent of mutual, both sides agreeing that there's no extensions, absent of.
Absent mutual written agreement of the parties.
Agreement.
So could, could you read the whole thing to me? Because I don't like the way it sounded at all.
Yeah, um, absent mutual written agreement of the parties, comma. "Under no circumstances will any extension of the timeframes in section eleven be allowed or permitted in spite of any impracticability, frustration of purpose, force majeure, or other legal theory allowing for the extension or delay of a party's contractual obligation." So if for some reason, uh, you know, and the date right now proposed for the CO is July eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and you can change that tonight as well. But if you leave it that, um, and on July first, the chamber knows that it's not gonna be able to get it done by July, July eleventh, they can come back here, and they can talk to the council about extending that out further. And then you can reevaluate where you're at, but it's, you know, it's you, you could be having this conversation five years from now if you don't put a, a date in there.
So you still took the force majeure out?
Yes, and, and the reason for that is those provisions can end up in disagreements and disputes. And, you know, we, obviously, nobody here wants to see the chamber and the city in a dispute down the, down the road. And so providing clarity now diminishes the chances of a dispute occurring and provides clarity in terms of when the completion date, um, is, is what, when it's set for. But it gives the opportunity to the chamber to come back and say, look, we can't, for whatever reason, we can't complete it by this date, and we'd like an extension.
And we can agree to it, and we do.
Is there any questions from the other council? Council members, comments? Go ahead.
I think that the reason for, I mean, I didn't ask for the force majeure. I didn't ask for, I really didn't ask for that, but I, I think the reason, I think the problem I have is we've been given false information ever since I've been on council. Like, we, you guys were granted this permit in late twenty eighteen. I do think Mr. Cropsey seems very good, and I feel like you could do a good job at this project. But I've been, we've been lied to consistently in committee meetings, in council meetings. We were told George said his name was on the line, and you would need my permit on December thirty-first, which I understand is a bold statement in a pandemic. I thought it was, I wrote it down, so I'm like, wow, that's a bold statement. You said you were shovel ready. I understand that. I, I never thought this was the best deal for you guys or for us. Like, I think that there's a better deal in place. I just, and you guys have given us different financials. Initially, you said you were sixty-four thousand dollars in the hole. Then you said, two weeks later, you were a hundred thousand dollars in the green, and it's just, it just doesn't seem like it's the I'm not saying that I don't have faith that you can do it, Mr. Cropsey. I just, we've been lied to consistently, so it's hard for me to get behind. Okay, yeah, I don't think that that, I don't think that we should make, like, lock you into the date, but I was told on the phone this summer in the committee meeting, well, we didn't ask for that deadline, so we're not gonna abide. I was told on the phone this summer in the committee meeting, well, we didn't ask for that deadline, so we're not going to abide to it. We'll just ask for an extension from December. So it's like, what is it? That's all I have to say.
All right. I mean, I've been involved with this for six years and I do not believe we've been lied to at all. I think we've been working with the chamber. Well, I do, I 100% believe this has taken too long. I think they needed to get somebody like Mr. Kropsey involved and definitely I think that was a key component of this all. But this is just, how many companies have come before us? Prime example across from the bank or the old bank, they've asked for an extension that we have $100,000 in money on that one. And we're like, heck yeah, let's give them more time. We want to give them more time. We have no problem giving extensions. And then all of a sudden now it's like, this is horrible. We can't give an extension. Like what? We have no money vested in this except, at all, except for we've held you guys up because we can't get a quorum. So what, what are we, this is what we do. We say, we welcome businesses in. We had this whole conversation last time. Please bring your business into town. But now we're saying, if you don't bring it and give us the exact date that you're going to do it, then you can't get an extension. Like we can't be double sided. We have to pick a rules. We, hey, we want your business in. We're not putting any money down yet. You have to finish this project. This is the building. This has nothing to do with the visitor's center yet. This is you building, your building in there. If you, we choose later on that it, the visitor's center doesn't come, then you will, that's a whole nother agreement. This is just your building coming in at this point in time. Thank you for building your building in our town and continuing to have your chamber in our El Garza. What you do from there, we'll come back and we'll discuss that agreement again, I'm sure. Thank you.
Mr. Kropsey.
I also want to call attention to the fact that we are in January. We're at, they're asking for an extension to July. If we scrap this whole thing right now, I, I contacted some of my friends in Los Angeles that are contractors that build in all over Los Angeles, Beverly Hills, Malibu, Pelasverdes and everywhere else. And what it would cost to get new architecture drawings to start all over again. We are looking at two to three years down the line by the time we do building permits, architecture plans, going all over it, starting all over again. And we're looking at July versus several years from now. So I don't see, and I personally, I, I feel that, you know, there may be where you, there are misunderstandings, but I personally don't feel like there, anyone has ever lied to us. It's like these were the beliefs of what was going to happen. These were the plans. They didn't work out that way. You should come live in my mind and my house. You'd all be, you'd all be in rehab. So life is happening for all of us and this has not been fun and, and COVID's back. And things are crazy again. So let's go. I, I made a motion and, and we have a second. And hopefully, don't we get public comment?
Yeah, well, I, I've got some sad deal with Tom and Ellen. I'm just, I don't want to live in your head. And I don't believe we've been lied to. This, our three of us have been to committee. We've been told that state information, everybody's got them. I think the chamber board was a little naive to sit there and believe that they could delay this until all the contractors got up to their eyeballs in the work that actually pays them. So all these dominated things, you might have to pay for some of that. So you have to spend some of that money. Sound like you already got the plumbing done and the concrete poured in there. So you're moving forward. You've got the metal ordered. You might have to pay for that because people are busy. You've got the money to do it. I'd suggest you do it because you keep moving forward and that moves it. You know, it doesn't look like there's absolutely nothing because that's what, since we signed an agreement to the end of the year, that's what we've got is nothing because they're busier than hell out there working right now and they're not going to go hire two people at Robinson Electric to go down and work for free. You know, we're not going to pay them. They're not going to hire people to go do that. They're busy. So you guys are moving forward now. I'm glad to see it. I'm still in trouble, but we want to take that first jerk out of there because there's just, no contracts are signed without that guarantee. Stuff's are out of your hands and if you're going to lose what you invest, you're not going to sign that contract if there's a chance for that. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Kropsey.
Mayor Williams, you, you've hit the nail right on the head. The four, I, again, I've been involved in dozens of contracts and I've never seen one without a force majeure clause. However, I have seen lots of them and I'm not trying to let, I'm not trying to, what is it? Anyway, I'm not trying to create another issue, but every contract, public contract I've ever been involved with, I think has had a penalty. So what we did, of course, what the contractors would do is he would go to the force majeure clause and say, okay, well, I'm delayed because something happened, whatever it was, and kept, you kept the, the governing body posted on why we're not going to make July the 11th. It's going to be the 13th. I have never seen a contract without a force majeure clause. And I also, my second comment was, so what happens if we both come to the table and we don't get a unanimous consent to delay the day from July the 11th? It, this has the same effect. If we don't get a unanimous consent to extend the deadline from July the 11th to August the 1st, we've got the, it's the same effect as if you didn't do a thing. And again, I'm not trying to practice law. I'm just trying to understand what the laws, what the rules and the law says.
We could actually put a penalty in if you don't make it, but then we're just taking away from your instruction fund.
I wouldn't find, what is it? Let the genie out of the box or whatever. I wasn't trying to get there. I just said.
No, I understand.
One without it. And the way that they, we, we forced contractors to keep us posted as the owner. We said, okay, if you had a rain delay, but in Alaska, it wasn't a rain delay. If you had a hundred mile an hour blizzard delay, you posted, you sent it, sent the notice in and we added whatever days the blizzard lasts. How many days the blizzard took.
Do you have anything to add?
Yes, first thing I say, I have to object to councilwoman's merits language. We've never lied. We've made some misjudgments, but never lied and I disagree with that. Okay. And second thing is the application of the contract. Not considered loophole. It's common sense. It's not a loophole that we signed. It was what happens out of our control. And it was out of our control. It wasn't that we were lazy. It wasn't that we decided to, to drag our feet on purpose. But those, that pandemic changed everything. And that's still a good clause. We want to get this thing done. I'm tired of this myself. And I don't take that personal. I just want to clarify.
I wanted to apologize. I felt really bad because that is a strong word.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
I was quoting you. I do have written down drag their feet. So I'm sorry about.
Okay. Anyway, I think that we should still have that clause in there because once again, it's not a loophole. It's common sense if something's out of our control and there's nobody, including the city, wants us to go forward as much as we do. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. What? Yes. Go ahead.
I am going to change my motion. Now that we've had this whole discussion, I am going to move that we accept the request and grant the extension that we leave the clause in there and we're still shooting for July 11th.
And force majeure.
Force majeure, yes.
So all we're changing is the date.
You're changing the date.
And we need a second to approve it.
And I'll second that. Change amendment.
Open it up now. I know we're going to open it up real quick for public comment. Is there any public comment on this issue? Real quick, Barbara, because I saw you standing there.
I'm not sure that we're supposed to get any public comment at this point, but I'm glad you did. There was only a small issue that I had been told by other people that the chamber had used the city's services. Labor, I don't know about materials or anything, and we're supposed to be billing them when they do that. I don't think there's an, I don't work with the inner workings of the city like that. But when they rely on us to do something, we're giving them our services and they should be billed. So you're saying right now you're shaking your head, Mr.?
The only issue we've had is finding the sewer line that we gave them drawings that were wrong.
Right. And it had to do with locating the line outside with Sigh and Alberto and whoever else spent time out there. So we're donating that time to them?
The landlords of the building, we gave them bad drawings.
You gave them bad drawings?
Right.
Okay.
Me and my crowd.
You didn't work yourself?
I didn't do it myself. My crowds were dull that day.
Okay. So if that, I understand in the past, in the dark ages with the Romans in Italy, way back, that the chamber came to us and we paid their salaries or did something, paid for a lot of things that they got, services, whatever it was. I don't know. I didn't even live there back.
Years ago, we were paying them and the, and the museum $5,000 a year. That was a subsidy we gave them to stay open. But that hasn't been for years. I mean, I got elected in 2000 and Steve Thomas made that go away.
That long ago.
That quick. Yeah.
So, so that's not going to happen. Right? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other? Let's call for the vote. There's no further discussion.
So it is now, this, we're still adding in the second, the clause originally that John stated.
You're, you're just, you're just taking the existing lease and you're just changing the deadline, the date. And just to be, you know, I wanted to be clear that, you know, my intent was not to create any tension between the chamber. I just sensed that there was some conflict on the council. I was trying to come up with a, a solution that everybody would be okay with. So apparently, apparently I did not succeed in my.
No, John, you did succeed. You did succeed. You caused this conversation. And we came to a conclusion based on your recommendation.
Let me just see the language here.
Go ahead.
And members of the council. Since Mr. Kropsey has been involved, he has been getting daily.
Whenever, whenever, whenever.
Whenever there is work done, we get a written report from Mr. Kropsey. So we can track the progress on this.
Can we get a, can we still continue that? Yeah, the monthly, I think that was brought up before too, the monthly come updates.
We just changed the date that's in paragraph two, in paragraph two of the existing lease. We will change that from December 31, 2021 to July 11th, 2022. That's it. Okay. Give them the extension, but it leaves the force majeure language in.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Merritt?
No.
Belt?
Yes.
You want me to vote, Dale?
We still need four affirmative votes to adopt a resolution.
This isn't, this is just changing a date in the existing contract.
It's just a contract.
Okay. Mr. Pinkney? We have two ayes, two noes, and Jeff voted aye to break a tie. So we have three affirmative votes to change an existing lease.
It's not ordinance.
The original lease was approved by resolution. Am I correct?
I believe so, yes.
Then under the, well, I believe that's correct. If, if that is correct, under the equal dignities rule, what's done by resolution needs to be done by resolution. So just looking here. The, the vote is what it is and we'll have to go back and look to see if the original lease was approved by resolution. And if it was, then it requires four votes to amend it.
Yes. Hi, John. This is Patrick. Yes, the, the original lease was approved by resolution.
Yes. Resolution number 2021-22.
2021-22.
Your honor, I have a question for John. So how do we move forward here, John? This has been three months. We just move forward? Do we, do we just keep working?
You now have an existing lease written as is, unchanged, and the, the tenant claiming that they're operating, they claim they are in compliance with the lease because their time to perform is extended during the force majeure period. And at some point, the city may disagree with that and, and believe that the, the extension period has expired. And that's what I was trying to avoid is a situation down the road where you end up in a dispute with one another by providing some clarity, but the motion failed.
So if that, if that is in, the force is in, the in play right now, they should have an automatic extension of a year and a half.
Yep. And they just get, pick their own date, whatever they want.
Well, no, it's extended for the period of force majeure for the event. So let's say, for example, hypothetically, that the pandemic lasted for six months or there was a, a, a supply chain problem for six months. It was clear that the, that that period of, of supply chain problems lasted for six months. Then under the force majeure language, the time to perform is extended for six months. The problem is, the problem is that disagreements can develop if the city contends, well, you only should be given X period of time and the chamber says, no, we should be given longer. And you can end up in a dispute with one another. And that's why I was, what I was trying to avoid by providing some clarity in terms of what the completion date expected was.
So, so the supply chain issue is still going. So you've got six months now and it's going to continue extending the force majeure under that pandemic issue which you just said. And so until, I guess, the Fed decide the pandemic's over, they can just keep going.
Your honor, they're playing for six months.
I know.
We're allowing now.
And so under force majeure, they still have the six months to do it.
Two years though.
So, so Mayor, the, the council members that voted against the motion can, can move to reconsider the item if they wish to do so. Otherwise, the motion failed.
Okay. But under the existing contract with that issue in there, they still have an extension of six months. Well, actually more than that because it's been about 18 months.
Yeah, I think that that's debatable, what the, that's the issue, right? It's debatable what that period of extension is. And, and I would hate to see the city and the chamber enter into a relationship in good faith and down the road, maybe it's two years down the road, end up in a disagreement or a dispute. And so I think it's beneficial to everybody involved to have some clarity in terms of what the expectations are for the completion date. And then, you know, and, and perhaps maybe it's a different completion date that's proposed in, in the contract. You know, we could, it was proposed at July 11th. You could change the date. And, you know, if the, if the council members that voted against the item are inclined to do so, they could move to reconsider it if they wanted to. But at least it would provide some clarity to everybody involved and diminish significantly the chance that there will be a dispute between the parties later.
I do that. So. All right. Well, I guess they can just stand on their force majeure and we'll deal with it that way and they bet six months or whenever. All right, move on. Yep. Thank you. We're going to be, so the city council meeting, convene the joint meeting, MPA meeting called to order. All calls previously been taken. MPA council consent counter. All matters listed on the consent counter are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion, the form listed. The mayor or any member of the MPA city council may pull an item from this consent counter for discussion. Part of MPA council, actually a member of the public, may address the city council, MPA. Our, I have a three minute time limit per person is applied. Oh, yeah. No problem. Go ahead. Get that, man. She just apologized for my. I was sick for the last three months.
Anniversary of CDC's COVID-19 pandemic.
A year?
It's still going.
Yeah, no, it's still going. So right now it's a year.
So we're at March 11th, 2020. So right now we're at two years.
Yes, Lord. That's what you have to go by.
Okay.
We're waiting for the vice mayor. So we'll hang on just a second. Time to get a cup of coffee. So consent counter. Recommended action is approve items three through six on the consent counter by a friendly roll call vote. Any discussion? Anybody want to put anything off consent? Or we need a motion?
To approve the consent calendar?
I'll second.
Thank you. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Merritt? Williams?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the consent, uh, recessed council meeting, MPA meeting, convening a city council meeting, back public hearing seven. Public hearing noticed to consider all evidence and testimony for or against approval. Um, the application from Mr. John E. Bastani, representative for Route sixty six Farms LLC for a conditional use permit for a two-phase cannabis cultivation facility, phase one existing building in a forty-five twenty square feet and phase two, a new two stories, fourteen thousand three hundred twenty-four square feet building located at three and fifteen Balboa in a C three highway commercial zone, also known as assessed parcel zero six six zero zero eight one twenty-one. Staff report.
Honorable men, men, some council members in front of you, we have CUP twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash thirteen regarding the previous stated address with the mayor stated today's January twenty-fifth. So we have a CUP in front of you for a two-phase project located at three one five Balboa Place totaling nineteen thousand three hundred and forty square feet. So looking at the city's, uh, the location within the city, the project situated on the intersection of River Road and Balboa Place, approximately three hundred and fifty feet east of the interstate, uh, forty freeway. Looking at the vicinity map, the project is zone highway commercial. Looking at the screen in front of you, you can see that to the northwest is an existing cannabis facility. To the northeast, it is currently entitled, uh, cannabis facility. To the south is another, uh, existing, uh, cultivation facility that's currently being, uh, uh, receiving their C of O within the next couple of weeks. So as you can see, the, the current location is situated within a, uh, cultivation cannabis facility, uh, area. There's an aerial map. So the project site is located in a point eight eighty acre parcel that's, will involve tenant improvements. And it will also, uh, include a development of an existing, uh, building that's going to create a second building at the site. So here's some background. As I stated, there's a two-phase project totaling nineteen thousand three hundred and forty square feet. The first will include forty-five hundred square feet of tenant improvements. Phase two is an expansion of a, is existing building of the construction totaling fourteen thousand eight hundred and twenty square feet. So it's currently zoned in the right commercial area and which permits this use. Phase one of the project will have three staff and then there'll be an additional twelve staff brought on uh, once the second phase is operational. And then it'll be twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. There is adequate parking at the site. So looking at the site plan, you can see, uh, the shaded gray area is the existing building that will have tenant improvements within it to total the forty-five hundred square foot building um, on the site that's currently existing today. If, if you are familiar with the site, um, you would know that code enforcement a couple of years ago, uh, we put on some bulletproof vests, entered into the building because there was actually illegal cultivation occurring at the site. So since then, the, the, it's been sold to a new owner and it's, uh, the current owner is currently the applicant to try and get this permitted to make it a legal cultivation facility. And so the floor plan consists of a cultivation room, security storage, dry room, things of those nature, uh, bathrooms, uh, and this is the existing building with the tenant improvements. Here's the elevations. You can see the proposed from the east elevation. It's a fifteen, uh, foot tall building. Uh, these are the sides, the east and the west. And then looking at the front, um, the north elevation with the pop out which creates the architectural enhancement of the existing building, uh, that's currently there today. So phase two, here's the site plan for the second phase. It's a two-story building totaling fourteen thousand eight, eight hundred and twenty square feet. Um, basically, uh, at the new gray shaded area, and you can see the entire site that includes all the parking spaces. So they're going to expand the current building and add this building to the site. So the first floor of this building, cultivation rooms, dry rooms, that much of the same that you see from the other uh, secure storage, bathrooms, wet, dry room, uh, things of that nature. And then again, on the second story, you're going to see a lot of that as well. Cultivation room, uh, bathrooms, uh, fermentation room, things of that nature. Here's the elevations, looking from the north elevation and then from the east. And then you can see the architectural enhancement, uh, on that bottom image. It's going to mirror a lot. Um, it's the same developer that's doing the, that did the twenty-seven oh one Columbus. So you're going to see, uh, coming over the highway right on the other side of this. Actually, uh, you'll see that that architectural enhancement mirrors that. And you can see the top one with the existing building with the new building added behind it. That's basically what it's going to look like. There's some color renderings coming up, but just want to give you an idea. Here's some of the color renderings. As you can see, uh, there's a color palette coming up, but this is what it will look with some color. You see the trim across the doors and then along the top. And then here's the new building. So the phase, second phase will include, uh, this building. And that's what it's going to look like from the different elevations that you've already seen. These are just in color. So there's a landscape plan that's been, uh, presented to the council, and this is what you're seeing today. Uh, Texas Ranger, red yucca, purple plum, valley oak, sunshine, ligstrom, astro turf and four to six inch river rock and boulders will be located within the facility, uh, boundaries. And additionally, well, we'll talk about in a second, but there'll be a wrought iron fence around the whole property. Here's a site photo, current existing building, looking at the facing northwest. Current site facing south. As you can see, that's the existing, uh, cultivation building with the palm trees that you see along the highway. That's current, it's going to be operational within the next couple of weeks. And then here's the existing building that will have an architectural enhancement with the pop out. And here's facing northwest. So here's some of the colors for the first phase. As you can see, um, desert colors. And then here's for the second phase, again, desert colors. So some of the added conditions that we've added, so there's a, a total canopy limitation. Um, there's also a before certificate occupancy, the landscaping, uh, the desert efficient plants shall be installed. So prior to CFO, uh, issuance of CFO, there will also be a six-foot wrought iron fence located around the entire building, uh, boundaries. And that's new from planning commission. That was added at the planning commission meeting. Uh, all building structures that are visible will have a architectural enhancement from the I forty. And then prior to building permit, applicant will submit street improvements that are going to take place um, at the facility curb, gutter, sidewalk, things of that nature. So like every cannabis project that requires a conditional use permit, we have to think the findings to approve the project. So one is, uh, that the requested permit is within the jurisdiction according to the table. Yes. Is the application complete? Yes. That's why it's in front of you. Um, the development is in general conformity with the needle's general plan. As stated, the, it's in the proper zoning, which allows this used to be at the site. Uh, the finding, is it in harmony? As previously stated, it's surrounded by cultivation, uh, type of entitlements to the north, northwest, northeast and to the south. So it is in, uh, in harmony with the surrounding area. The development does not merely materially endanger the public health. So there are conditions that have been added to the conditions of approval that would limit, uh, odor and types of those, um, to occur. So the lighting, security systems, things of that nature. So will not impede the health and safety for safety purposes. And then finally, will the development not substantially injure the value of the joint property? So these are um, improvements that are going to add value to that existing vacant building that, as I previously stated, was an illegal grow at one point in time. So they'll be utilizing the tire shop that became illegal grow to potentially becoming a cultivation facility at the area. So at the public commission meeting, there was no public testimony taken. There, as I stated, there wasn't added condition. Uh, the six-foot, uh, tall wrought iron fence be considered to encompass the entire property boundaries. The applicant, uh, and the representative stated that wouldn't be a problem. So that was an added condition. So the December sixteen, twenty twenty-one planning commission did recommend approval of this conditional use permit. So what we have in front of you is a recommendation to approve resolution twenty dash twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two dash thirteen for a CUP at this two-phase, uh, project at the building located at three one five Balboa Place for nineteen thousand three hundred and forty square foot cultivation facility. And with that, I now am open for any questions. The applicant is also here, you, um, to give a presentation and just kind of talk about any questions that you might have. There's also members of the planning commission here, um, that are in the public that if they want to elaborate on what, how they came to their conclusion, they're here as well. So.
All right. Are there any questions, council of staff?
I think this is, I think this is the perfect area. There's marijuana on that section.
Yeah.
It's right across the street from vertical, right? Great Western.
Right. Yes. You got vertical to the north. You got.
Location, location.
Can we?
Location.
One more thing.
So yes, ma'am.
Can we make sure that the, um, ventilation, their filtration marijuana smell is in place before they get their C, um, CUP?
So we will, we will be reviewing that. The building department, as when the building plans are submitted, they will be reviewing the ventilation. If you want a closed loop system of that nature.
Can we, are we adding that into, sorry?
Go ahead.
That into our new, um.
And the applicant can also elaborate on that also, but.
That smell is already horrible over there. We're still trying to remedy that whole area. Just, they're like every day. So, uh, is it the same owner?
Facility?
Yeah.
Correct.
And so.
Because he hasn't had an, I'm sorry.
Give your name and address.
Cheryl Montanet.
Oh, no, it's the other side.
Four six time four, Caillou Ghost and Peeling.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I think, uh, Dean has installed some fans and since those installation, he has had no complaints. Um, they still have the Ono outside as an extra measure, but we'll do the same thing ventilate. Um, he's staying closed loop. I just want to give you a little, like, you can't close loop. We always have to have fresh air coming in. In cannabis, they like to close loop, but the code doesn't allow that. We have to bring in fresh air, exchange the air. So the air has to go somewhere. Um, what they've done at the Taco Bell site is taking a giant fan. Effectively, you're sucking all the hallway air and then shooting it so high in the sky that by the time it comes down, the smell has dissipated and you guys can no longer smell it. I mean, that's essentially the science behind it. Um, and it's worked. So we'll incorporate that into all the future projects and Alberta will look forward in my plans.
Perfect.
Any other questions from the council? Thank you. All right. I'm going to open this up to a public hearing. Is there any public comment on this issue? Any public comment at all?
Joe Johnson, thirteen twenty, Santa Fe Circle. I'm not for or against weed. I'm for our communities, and I think this is actually an appropriate place for it. This is not going to encroach on anybody. There's already, uh, other buildings around it that do the similar thing. I think this is an appropriate place for the facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Any other public comments? See, now I will close public hearing. Bring it back to the council for discussion, deliberation and a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
A motion to second any further discussion from the council. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yeah.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Public hearing noticed to consider all evidence and testimony for or against approval of an application from Mr. Gregory Lucas to change the general plan. Designation from one oh nine North L Street, also known as APN zero one eight five dash one 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 dash eight four dash zero 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 from a medium density residential to industrial. Said property is located near the BNSF railroad underpass at Front Street and K Street. And public hearing noticed to consider all evidence and testimony for or against, um, approval of an application from Mr. Gregory Lucas to change the zoning designation. One on nine, one oh nine North L Street, also known as APN zero one eight five dash one 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 dash eight four dash zero 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 from multi-family residential R three to light manufacturing and M one. Said property is located near the BNSF railroad underpass at Front Street and K Street. Staff report.
Honorable mayor, uh, council members in front of you, we have a, uh, a resolution that involves, um, on, so it's, it's actually supposed to be twenty twenty-two dash nine. I apologize, but it's correct in the staff report. But so you're currently looking at a resolution. It's going to be twenty twenty-two dash zero nine. Uh, it's grow heights. So we're going to break this down. There's, as you know, there's numerous, uh, there's numerous items on the agenda. So we're going to do one. It's important to understand that in order for the second two agenda items to occur, this one has to occur first. So this cannot occur without the second two, um, so the second two items cannot occur without this item, uh, occurring. So I'll discuss that. So in front of you, again, this is twenty twenty-two dash nine. I apologize. It's a resolution from the city council approving the general plan amendment from a residential medium density designation to an industrial designation and a resolution approving a proposed zone change from a multi-family residential to a light manufacturing. Uh, parcel located at one zero nine L Street, also known as APN zero one eight five one 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 dash zero eight four. And again, this is agenda nine, item number eight that you're looking at. So the current location is off of, uh, North Key Street in that neighborhood right there. As you can see up on the screen. So coming off of North Key Street, uh, the current parcel exists today. That's in discussion for this general plan and zone change. So that's what we're talking about today. So it's important to focus on that. So here's the vicinity map. As you can see to the north, there are residential structures there at the site. To the south is the train coupled by the I forty with additional residences that are at that site with our train park to the west. You can see it's Ed Perry Park with our golf course. And then, um, to the west is a vacant parcel with residences on the west side. So here's an aerial map, just looking at it that was presented to you, uh, in your packet. There's a project site off North Key Street. Um, for the, uh, this, uh, general plan change. So looking at the map itself, we wanted to provide you so you knew what you were looking at. So the purple with the shade is the parcel that's currently in question for the general plan amendment and the zone change. So the purple, as you can see on the screen, is single family residential. The green, the green is general commercial. And the yellow is light manufacturing. And then the pink is commercial resort residential. So what's being asked of you today is from the applicant is to change the shaded box there from the purple to the yellow. So you will have a yellow square in that area. And that's what the applicant's requesting of the city council today. So here's some site photos looking, uh, west towards the freeway at the parcel off of North K Street. This is again off of North K Street, looking towards the railroad. Some roadside photos, you can see what's in the surrounding area, residences, um, and a vacant parcel and the freeway and the trains are beyond that, north of that. And then this is off of L Street, looking towards, um, looking east towards the vacant parcel. And again, this is, uh, another picture looking towards the parcel. And then this is L Street looking down towards the parcel. This is facing, uh, north towards the train tracks and the highway, just to give you some context of the surrounding area. And so in effort to, uh, present to the council, these were findings that were made before the public hearing was heard at the planning commission. So you're seeing the same findings that were presented to the planning commission. at the planning commission. So you're seeing the same findings that were presented to the planning commission. So the amendment to, you need to make these findings in order to move this forward. And again, um, the amendment that the amendment or this plan is consistent with the intent of the goals of the general plan as a whole is not consistent with any element therefore. So this general plan amendment by moving it from residential medium density designation to the industrial designation would be consistent with the elements and goals and policies of the general plan related to industrial uses. But remember at this site, it wouldn't be just um uh all uses of industrial would be found within that residential area. So it's important to understand that. So the subject parcel is within the current uh designation and would permit residential development. That's what's currently at the site. But if you were to change this zoning, what he's asking for would other would allow other industrial uses at the site. So with this proposed general plan amendment, the project is stated to be consistent with the general, with the industrial general plan because it's within uh an industrial area. Is of the subject site. So we're basically saying there is industrial located within the area of the subject site. So would it be inconsistent by changing this general plan? Does I'm making an amendment to the site. So that the amendment or the plan, the second finding is that the amendment or general plan is necessary to prescribe reasonable controls standards for the affected land uses to ensure compatibility and integrity of those uses with other established uses. So this industrial designation um is currently on a vacant piece of land that was previously developed with both residential and commercial uses. Um, and uh in order to prescribe reasonable controls and standards of the effective use would be to propose that it be in conjunction with the other site located uh one point five miles west of the subject parcel. And then the third finding that the amendment or plan is necessary to provide reasonable property development rights within the protecting environmentally sensitive land uses and species. So the general plan amendment is necessary in order to provide reasonable property development rights in the area with residential, commercial, manufacturing zones. As discussed in finding B, the subject parcel would be restricted to industrial development under the proposed M one zoning designation. So at the planning commission, there was public testimony which which was received during written and public testimony opposing the project. Which uh the written and public testimony of the project was in regards to the location not being suitable for cannabis businesses and and being within a residential neighborhood. Cause as you can see, items number ten and eleven are why this individual wants the intent to change the zone. So that's there. So there was a discussion regarding odors, noise being emitted from the project. So the discussion involved around the project, but here you're just talking about the general plan amendment and the zone change. So at the January nineteenth twenty twenty uh planning commission meeting that occurred uh last week, there was a four, uh three to one vote which recommended denial of this general plan amendment. So the designation, both the zoning and the amendment were uh, there was a motion for denial, but uh as you know, Steve previously said a resolution requires four, so that was just the sentiment of the board. So it didn't approve or deny anything. It just wasn't, it was just mute because there was not enough uh members to vote in favor or oppose it. So our recommended action is that the council provide us uh direction on how you want to approach and move forward with this general plan amendment and zoning change. And the applicant is also here if you have any questions. And there are members of the public here uh that were at the planning commission meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Focus this. There's a lot of information.
Yeah.
The only way the cannabis facility is if you first amend the gap. And if you don't, then the zoning, then the property can't be developed for cannabis or or any other manufacturing. So and the original findings that Patrick reviewed were not accepted by the planning. Their sentiment was to recommend if you deny the request. So.
Okay.
Just want to be clear with that. The recommendation is on this is not okay. And then, yeah, then the other two never even got in front of me.
Right.
It'd be good. They become moot. Because.
Okay, so let me get this clear.
Hold on.
Mayor, may I?
I have to move on to council questions of staff now. Go ahead with.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Um. So if it was that this was approved by council, we still could have voted on these next two because I would have to go in front of planning.
No.
You've, you have.
We're going to have to go on.
If you approve the general plan and you approve the zone change, then you have the authority independently to go ahead and issue the two conditional use permits. But if the general plan amendment is not approved, those other three actions become. No, it's complicated.
I had a question too. In your presentation, it sounded like if we do change this to an M one.
Yes, sir. M one.
That you can't put homes on or do anything else with it. It's got to be manufacturing.
Well, permissible use table. And that's what guides us. This is a table permissible uses. And so it defines zoning and what's with, what's allowed within the uses. So to answer your question, Mayor, uh, the only residential would not be permitted within the M one designation. That is correct.
Thank you.
The type of uses that would be allowed are manufacturing. So processing, creating, repairing, removal of paint, cleaning, assembly goods. Um, that would be permitted in the M one zone. Um, bowling alleys, uh Coliseum stadiums.
Hey, go bowling now.
Horseback riding stables. And I'm not trying to make a mockery of them. I'm just reading automobile and motorcycle track racing. Uh institutions uh for care or confinement facilities. And storage, things of that nature. So those are the types of of types of uses that would be allowed within the M one.
Okay.
A veterinarian, uh, things of that nature. Those are the kind of uses, but no residences would not be allowed within that zoning.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions to the council for staff? All right, um. I need to open a public hearing. Is there any public comment on this issue?
Yeah.
We'll come, public comment and then applicant comments.
And and for the record, the respondents I announced earlier are in opposition.
All of them?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to open it for public comment. We'll use this and then the applicant will be able to deal with your comments or make his statement. So go ahead.
Joe Johnson thirteen twenty Santa Fe Circle. This is an example of inappropriate area. There's houses all around it. Changing this to allow a cannabis facility to be in there to bombard that community with smell, with issues, with problems. Uh, this is not an appropriate place. If you approve this, you're going to probably do some detriment to that neighborhood. It is not going to benefit that neighborhood having that there. The zoning commission already said no. They know better than I do, but I could tell you that's not going to help that community. Um, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. Barbara? Hey, you're going to go when I say, no, I'm just kidding.
Sorry, my name's Dan, two oh five Spruce Street. This is literally my backyard.
So what was your name again?
Dan. Two oh five Spruce. This location is literally my backyard. Um, I have children. I'm worried about safety, smell. I don't think this is like the previous, but the previous uh previous one that you guys explained, that's a perfect, perfect spot for that. But there's kids in this neighborhood and I don't think this will be the best spot for this type of business. And that's all I want to say. Say you.
Thank you. Is that, oh, that's Kristen. I knew it was Kristen. Tell her behind the Jesse James mask.
Kristen Lynn, one oh seven North L Street. Um, I don't like to speak in front of people, uh, but I oppose this. My family, that's right next to us. My grandma's here too. That's right behind us. And uh, I don't know. I just.
You're okay. You're friends.
You know, just to think of, just to have like a wall right there, you know, it's the railroad. It's our residence and then to have a cultivation right there. That's not cool. I'm born and raised here. Marijuana, whatever you guys could put it wherever, but not in a residential area. That's all I got to say.
Thanks, Kristen. Tim, when you're going to speak in front of the public, she's trying to be like that tonight.
Tim Terrell, Lily Hill Drive. Um, the first role of business is location, 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 and this isn't it. Um, right, we, I live down the street from Lily Hill Grove. They are quite a bit away from any residence. There's no such thing as one hundred percent mitigation of the smell. They tried, they tried their best. And there's quite a bit of distance. Putting this literally on the property line with houses, you're asking for disaster. I think it will destroy that neighborhood. So that's pretty much all I have to say. I ask you not to approve this.
You could be voting on it, quitter. Norma, you want to go now?
Yes, yes. There are three things I may have forgotten to, but hopefully I'll get one out of the three. Barbara Beard, two thirteen Safari. First, I'd like to address Commissioner Evans's inquiry about doing the first one and not reaching, we did all four. Um, I was put to that as vice chair that night. Um, Ms. Kate is out of town. And I was put to that task after Mr. Daniels and Mr. Martinez both discussed it to go through each of the four just in case. So there is a record that all four of them were, we recommended that you deny all four of them, one by one. Okay? The rest is not to do with procedure like that. Um, I agree with the people that are opposing this. This is a residential area and it should be saved that way. We have um a zoning change that was made. I don't remember the big long honking title about a year ago. I'm sure Patrick has it memorized. That took all of the gates subdivision, R one, R two housing and all over the city. I can't remember how much it applied to. Residential, the top zone you can have are one and allowed the accessory dwelling units, which we had already done, and then zoned for the extra building residents. So we now can have up to three houses on those parcels up in gates that are one point twenty five on acreage or more. Mine's a little over that. Um, these houses are in a residential area that probably will not be able to have accessory dwelling units or two houses because they are smaller. I don't know how many more are left around town that are like that. This is a precious little residential area that I believe should be preserved as such and not invaded in any way, shape or form. I was also concerned, I remembered all three, the parks, the baseball diamonds. This is cannabis, okay? Six hundred feet for one item. I can't remember what it was. And um, it's the what?
Schools.
Schools. And the, I spent so long.
No.
And two hundred feet for parks, et cetera, a lot of other categories. It's four hundred seventy five feet. I measured it on Google Pro Maps. Okay? And I did it several times. So you're outside the two hundred limit, but you're only outside of it by two hundred seventy five feet. Field Dreams, Ed Perry Park is a place that we have a lot of families go to all the time. And I believe that whatever odor is emitted from that area is eventually going to affect that park area because I'm getting an idea how far these odors can travel. There is another issue that has to do with noise. Since the big four across from the new fire station that are almost on the corner of Safari and the ninety five started going up, I never heard any of the structural steel being in installed. And I'm only a couple of blocks from there. But as soon as they put the walls up, all the the noise from the ninety five, may I have a moment? Um, and the forty are tenfold the noise factor and they don't even have their air conditioners yet. Okay? Now, this gentleman has made a great project with considering all of the possibilities to do the best he could in that area. And one of those is the noise factor by putting the ACs in the middle of the two buildings. Okay? Well, to me, that's going to create a tunnel effect. But in my opinion, just based on the walls going up on these big buildings over there, my noise level has increased so much that I don't think there's anything you can do to keep that noise factor down, especially when you have it right on top of all these houses. And Mr. Daniels was kind enough to start counting up there. I asked the question, how many homes are up there? And I think we reached two hundred as an estimate. I don't know how many are up there and we have a lot of vacant land.
What do you mean up there? Your place or this?
Going from K Street, the K Street, going up to the high, um Needles Highway.
Gotcha.
And cutting over to Broadway. Okay, that whole area in there. We estimated, I think it was two hundred homes that are affected. And we have vacant lots where a lot of little houses can be built on there. If people want to build more residences to hold all the people that are going to work in the cannabis places, as somebody mentioned, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And good job remembering all three. Hey, Sean.
Honorable mayor, council.
Uh, Sean Gummison, fourteen oh six Bailey. Nice to have you back, Mayor. I'm glad you're doing better. Uh, comes down to, I'm going to just jump on the horse that's already been beat a few times, location, location, location. But uh, the whole thing about this location, it changes the whole demeanor of that entire neighborhood from North K to Broadway to Needles Highway. It's not just the vicinity right there, but it it changes that whole demeanor of those houses in that neighborhood down there. And the traffic, I don't know if you got into, was going to be put on to L Street, not K Street, was going to be the entrance. And there's some other things. And you know, there was six spoken opposition at planning a zone and now with additional public information or public opposition were like ten. And that's a lot for the city. You're, we're lucky to get a little bit in here for that much opposition. Opposition is a lot. And you know, yes, it was once commercial. If you can remember as a nursery, but that's twenty five years ago. It's not longer, I'm guessing. I can't remember honestly how long it was. So that's what I'm saying. It comes down to location. Thank you all for your time.
Thanks, Sean. Any other public input? All right, the applicant, Mr. Mark, would you like to make some comment?
What I'd like to say, and my name is Mark Hanawi. I live on ninety nine Zolane, City of Needles. I've been in the city of Needles uh for the last thirty years. And uh, I've owned a few businesses in the city and uh I'm here to develop the city. And uh, it's all about economics to me. Uh, I understand everybody's views and feelings, uh, but I tell you what, that lot right there have been vacant for thirty years. And if I don't do something about it, it'll be vacant for another fifty years. Anybody here that have any interest in that property, want to develop it, I'm willing to donate to the public or any council members. Now, five years ago, I went to the city and I came with the plan and the city gave me a list of conditions. And uh, they said if you meet all the conditions, uh, we'll look at your application. So five years later, I complied. I completed every condition on the list. Uh, which was the SEPA environmental checklist. And uh, spending all that money on the plans, on the environmental and all the reviews, I paid uh and fees. I'm not asking the community for any money to get involved in this uh project. But if they know what the project will generate in revenue annually, it will improve that whole community. That community needs a lot of improvements. And uh, the residents that live within three hundred feet of that community will never make enough to make enough money to improve the, the infrastructure of the community.
And I'd like to hear your story.
Uh, the projection of income on this project after it's completed two phases, it's going to generate. uh, it's going to generate over 17 million a year. If that's not enough income, revenue to the city to do some bettering on improvements, I don't know what will. But to tell me that, uh, residents are going to pay property tax to the city to, to make the difference, I don't see it. But, uh, my plans will generate that kind of money to do all the improvements for the community and the residents. When I first started looking into, uh, the plans, I went around the neighborhoods asking them, you know, what do you think we're planning on, uh, you know, developing this? And I found out later on, they were all illegal. They got arrested. They were growing illegally. They were doing this and that, and I don't know what they were doing, but come on now, everybody objects to the plan and they're all illegal. Not all, but say 70%.
Thank you.
So this is all I have to say. And I think I'll make a difference in the city by, uh, moving forward. Uh, the resolution 2022 dash oh nine approved the proposed general plan. I mean, it says it over here, even though there's some opposers, oppositioners that don't agree. But I don't see a problem developing that location. I did look into putting homes there. Contractors will not even come close. It's too close to the railroad. Okay. Uh, there's no attraction. And the vibration that the, the train is going to generate, nobody is going to buy any homes there. You know, they looked at the area, they look at the demographics. I mean, everything is just needs improvement. And I don't see any, anything coming up in near future. So what I'm asking is to move forward on this plan and generate the revenue. And so the city can do the improvements in that general area. Because there's nothing else generating income as far as I see. And I mean, I can say a lot more. I own Chestnut from M Street to Chestnut. I own Market Street. I own, uh, Needles Highway, one, six, one, one, uh, A, B, and the corner of Needles Highway and Broadway. I own Chestnut, uh, 1301, A and B, 1301 and a half. Uh, that location, 300 J Street. Right now we're spending about three. They said 300,000, which I don't believe. But close to 150,000 in improvement to, uh, the, uh, the dispensary, herbarium. And, uh, I mean, those are the things I'm doing within the city. I brought a lot of revenue, uh, for the city, bringing businesses, uh, to the owner. And I'm here to improve and better the city because I live here and I've done everything I can. Uh, so everybody will benefit from it. I've generated a lot of, uh, opportunities and, uh, different businesses to the area. And some didn't last, some did, some, I mean, just the facts that I'm trying to, uh, put out. And the initial study and the mitigation, uh, declaration, I spent almost uh, 200 grand on this report, you know? Because the city required it and I've done everything I can. And the, uh, uh, the general floor plan, uh, took two years. Okay, to approve by the city code. Uh, that took another two years, another $150,000 for the, uh, for the general site plan. And besides all the fees that I had to pay to the city. And, uh, uh, it was a requirement. I didn't mind. But, uh, here I am. You know, fighting, uh, uh, oppositioners. Uh, they don't see what I see. And I wish, uh, whoever doesn't agree to the, uh, uh, general plan, uh, will, uh, can do better than what I'm doing.
I don't have anything else to say.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Barbara.
Thank you for acknowledging me. I did want to speak about something Mrs. Kidd mentioned when she called in at our planning commission meeting. The same principle applies to your denial of that dispensary on Broadway that backed out to Front Street as well. Um, we need, and I think people that apply for permits need, and people that invest incredible amounts of money in the system need direction on where they can go, where they're likely going to get approved. The little dispensary, I think, took well over a year. I'm not sure, with revisions and revisions and revisions. And part of those revisions went on and were recommended by planning and whatever other departments in the city. While we were in discussion, trying to limit the boundaries of how many dispensaries we're going to have and where, okay? They continued on letting them spend more money. This is an incredible amount of money for an applicant to spend. And something needs to change, in my opinion, in City Hall. And you send, this gentleman said that he was given locations that he could take his, that they were recommending that he take his pick from, that he was likely going to get approved for. That location should not have been on that list because it's all residential. The odds of getting approved in that area are slim to none. So why was it on the list?
He already owned that. That wasn't Alyssa City gave him. This is his.
Oh.
Yeah.
So I thought he said it was on the list.
Nope.
Okay, so well then scrap that because I misheard that, okay? I retract that part. Okay. So we still need the direction. We need the general plan done as soon as possible with all the zoning that goes with it. And in the meantime, we're going to end up with applicants never wanting to do business in the city. Okay, I know some that wanted that dispensary. They're, I mean, they live from out of town, but they're not coming back. And a lot of people that knew them are not going to start a business here. Uh, now I've started a fire, okay? So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and, uh, you know, he started about how much money he's got. I wrote that, yeah, we've got to figure this out. That's absolutely nuts. That we told him to do a CEQA and everything else and he spent all that money to get to this point. And, and the vote hasn't been taken yet. I'm just saying, we got to figure that out. Either bring it to us for a pre-approval of the location or something we've got to do. So all right, we're going to bring it up to the council for discussion, liberation of motion. Go ahead, man.
Um, I, I agree with what Mr. Johnson said and what everybody said. I don't find that in harmony with the area. Um, I, we do elect the planning, or appoint the planning commission for a reason. And they also didn't find it in harmony with the area. But I completely agree with what the mayor said. Uh, that is a lot of money to be out and that's very unfortunate, so that's all.
Ellen? Yes?
Comment? I too do not believe it's in harmony with the area.
Can you use your mics, please?
I'm sorry?
Thank you.
I know that there are points of criteria that have to be met for every single person that goes through this, whether you're going to do a hospital, a dispensary, um, a, a convalescent home, a nursery school. It doesn't matter what you're doing. There are certain criteria that you have to meet. And one of those is, is it in harmony? I have had the discussion and I don't know what the answers are, but I, we are actually looking at it because it hurts my heart personally to watch people come in here that have spent a lot of money to get in front of us and for us to say no. That there has, and, and, but then to play devil's advocate, we can't just come up and say no and then never give you a chance to do what you have to do because then we're picking and choosing businesses. So that, that way we're sitting here playing God, saying that your business can't come in. There's got to be, I, I don't know what the answer is. I don't know what the answer is, but I've been sitting here for a year watching people come in. And I'm new, I have so much to learn. But I've watched people come in and spend a lot of money. The one that we just approved, the, the old nursery, $82,000 was spent for him just to come in front of us. And that was a difficult one, location. But it wa- it, it wasn't a dispensary. It, it's, it's something that's going to be a building that if you don't know what it is, you won't know what it is, hopefully. But these are the different things that we look at and that we're faced with. Uh, when you come before us is we are not absent of heart in knowing how much money is spent. And to have any, and to have anyone, I don't know how it happened, but to allow someone to believe that in that residential area, um, to, to have a, um, to have that kind of a business is difficult for me to understand how it got that far. I, I just don't understand myself. So I, I personally do not believe the location criteria is met um, for this business. There's so many places, but not in that neighborhood. It's just my feelings, so.
Donna?
If you made aware that this was going to be a hard win.
Well, when, when people come in, they, they have to develop their idea enough to understand what the impacts are going to be. What's the vibe, how, how bulky, uh, how many cars? Will it impact traffic noise, air dust, bugs and bunnies? Uh, and that's what the development process requires. I remember having a conversation very clearly, uh, with, uh, others that were involved at the time and saying, there is no assurance that you can go through this process and get permits. It is discretionary to the claim commission and ultimately the city council. And, uh, and some sites are easy. For example, we've advised people that come in that it is this hard to get a conditionally used for camps. In some areas of camp, I can't reach high. But they are free to apply, incur the cost, it's high risk on their part. Um, and we don't have authority to say you can't file an application.
Wait. Um, this is just an idea because we may have, I mean, we may have authority if we could bring something forward. Uh, don't accept any permits that require a, uh, general plan change or, or don't they change? Um, that would have, I mean, that would have been, been an easy, like, right way, it would have.
And, and the, Mr. Mayor, the time is right with that very important because we do have the general plan underway. So if I'm hearing from the council and I'll bring back to your next meeting that you're not going to entertain amendments to the general plan, uh, while, until the plan is adopted.
And we're looking at it in August. Still August.
Yes, yes, sir.
Amy.
Can I say one more quick thing?
Go ahead. Hello, Mark.
I just want to say, and that is one of our classic neighborhoods. That is like where a lot of the old homes are and they're really nice homes. I mean, you know, I'm, I, I don't like that he, I don't like the comments that, you know, they're rundown or anything. They're like, they're our historical home. So I just wanted to put that out there. I think it's a nice, it's a nice neighborhood.
They are. First time home bought. Uh, it's affordable housing. It's
And I like the residential.
Regional railroad.
Exactly.
Mark, do you have something to add before we go forward with the motions?
I want to mention, uh, to everyone in this room that the, uh, table of content of the initial study that cost almost 200,000 bucks and, uh, two years of my time is, uh, it covers the agriculture and, uh, forestry resources, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geo- geology and soils, uh, greenhouse gas emissions, hazard and hazardous material, hydrology and water quality, land use planning, mineral resources, noise, population and housing, public services, research and recreation, transportation and traffic, tribal cultural resource, utility and services, systems, mandatory finding of significance, okay? Discuss of medication measures and applicant, uh, proposed, uh, restrictions and earlier analysis. All of that's been studied and it passed, you know?
That's your CEQA? Yeah.
Yes. Just in case you, you know?
Yeah.
Some people don't understand.
Thank you.
So, I, uh, Honorable Mayor, I'd like to recommend, uh, recommend to council that you allow staff to prepare a new staff report taking into consideration tonight's comments and continue item eight along with the public hearing. Um, and also items 10 and 11 and the public hearing on these items until February 22nd, 2022. So in the second meeting in February, I'd like to make that recommendation.
We need our motion first to decide up or down.
Well, no.
And we'll add that. No, John's got to say something.
Yeah, Mayor, I think that what, uh, Mr. Martinez is saying is the way this is teed up in front of you is for approval with certain findings. Um, contemplating approval, but if the council, before you take action, you want to make certain findings as part of that action, right? And if the, based on the comments from the council tonight, it seems like the council's going in a different direction than the way the, the, the resolution was drafted. And so we would prefer to come back to you with a resolution that's properly done with findings consistent with, um, some of the comments that we got from council tonight.
But I don't know how anybody's going to vote.
Well, no, Honorable Mayor, let me clarify. So tonight, there were, there were findings presented. There were three of them. That was before the public comment was taken. Staff needs to take into consideration those comments and redo the findings. So it includes the comments that were brought up today. Will you bring up my, uh, my presentation? So we know what we're talking about specifically. So what I'm recommending to the council is that you allow us to go back and adjust these findings based on the comments that we made today. So they match what the council's sentiment is.
So you want to change your findings to represent?
Because we have to. Yeah, we have to. Based on the public's input, we need to amend these findings because they're, these findings are basically going to be adopted or not adopted by council. So we're going to create findings that are adopted by council that present what was discussed tonight. So it's, it's not in harmony. It's, it's not in harmony. It's in a residential area.
Comments by the council are rated by Florida. We want to capture the council's comments and the findings.
But city councils make comments and then vote different directions all the time. You don't really need direction from the council to say, yeah, go change the findings.
So take an action and then with the, then after that, on where you're going to go. Then, uh, continue the matter for two weeks. And then we will bring you a document that reflects that act.
I'm so confused.
So how are you going to get the direction the council wants you to go without them voting?
Go ahead. Yeah, I mean, uh, take the vote. I mean, it, it, you're right. I'm agreement. Take the vote, but after that, continue the matter to allow findings to be prepared, which reaffirm and substantiate uh, the findings that you all have. You're right. You got, yep. You, you got to jump in the pool somewhere. And now it would be take a vote on what, what your preference is.
Go ahead, Wayne.
Now, if we did that, we took the vote, um, that we wouldn't need to include uh, uh, us to continue the, the step for the staff to bring back findings that we have talked about.
Right.
You just do it, right?
Yeah, because if you deny this, they're going to go back and they're going to change the findings and bring it back, right?
Does that, that make sense? Here is the, uh, slightly scenario. And we haven't seen. Here is the, uh, slightly scenario that we haven't seen as much. And that is that on a denial, uh, there may be litigation.
Right.
Initiate. And we just want the opportunity to write down those findings. Which cement your decision and could make it.
Yeah, but so if we do, so if we table or something, I continue for two weeks, you still have no direction from the council, right?
I, I would encourage you to, uh, take a vote and that tells.
Right.
Those findings back for your adoption at the next meeting.
So we need a motion.
Yes.
Saying I do or I don't like this. And when a second, we can vote on it. And that gives you direction on how to adjust those findings.
Still gonna want to bring those back.
Sure.
So the council make those findings which back up their conclusions.
Got it.
Okay, I think we're making this too hard, but I understand we're trying to keep us out of litigation also. That's our job, to keep us out of litigation. So we need a motion.
I have a question.
Thank you.
I have a question from Mr. Honaway. Yes.
Seventh night, please.
I'd like to know when you found out that it would be necessary to have a zone change to, to, to bring this beautiful project into being. When did you find out that, that there's only, there were zoning requirements for building the project?
Uh, five years ago.
Thank you.
So they told you five years ago, you had to do CQ and all this other stuff?
Uh, yes. I had a list of conditions and I met every condition. Uh, took five years.
Except zoning.
Except zoning, and that was part of the application.
Okay. So we need a motion? Is, we don't have a motion because nobody knows exactly what to say, how to make the motion, or is there? No, no, because, okay, go right ahead.
I'll make a motion to, uh, deny the applicant.
Okay, so we may have to deny the applicant and you guys will put together the findings and bring it back.
Mr. Mayor, could I just clarify that based on public testimony that you heard tonight? And the record that was before planning commission and planning commission's recommendation. Then we will take that and bring back findings.
Is that right?
Okay.
Well, I didn't really say that.
Not okay though? Cause they gotta have direction.
Yeah, I need to know.
Based on the what we've heard tonight and based primarily on knowing that you were faced with a zoning change requirement. I, and knowing the area. I move to deny the applicant.
Good enough?
Yeah.
Okay, you got enough to go on. We have a second?
Second to deny?
Yep.
That, and there, isn't that normal?
We need a second to deny this resolution.
The general.
They will come back.
We're denying the general pant plan amendment. Okay, I'm seconding it, denying a general planned amendment.
Yep.
And zone change.
And zone change, and or zone change.
Both.
Both, and zone change.
Honorable Mayor, council member saying, uh, uh, I, I hate to make this so complete. So what you have in front of you is a resolution to amend the general plan and change the zoning.
Correct.
Within the same resolution.
Alright.
So that's.
Okay.
We, we will take care.
Alright, discussion from the council, Wade?
Um, I just have a question. John, um, just all legit here.
John, wait.
Yeah, so I think, um, you know, what staff was trying to convey is when this process is done. You wanna have a clear record of what your decision is and the basis for that decision. For your benefit and for the applicant's benefit. So he knows that his application was denied and why it was denied, and that's what the findings do. It was teed up for approval tonight. So we're gonna have to come back to you. You can vote tonight to reject this resolution and give us direction to come back with another one. Um, supporting denial and we'll do that.
Got it.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, any further discussion? Call for the vote?
We're, we are voting to deny.
Zone change on hand use, general plan.
Yes. Campbell's a yes, Evans?
Yes.
Yes.
Merritt? Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Okay.
That eliminates ten and eleven.
Because you can't approve those. You couldn't approve those about.
Land. John, did you have something to add?
Yes, we'd like to, we'd like, uh, my understanding from the comments was we're now gonna come back to you. With a resolution of denial. And finding supporting that denial.
Do we need to make a motion, John?
Right.
No motion required?
That sounds right. Yes, John.
John, are we continuing the public hearing?
And continue the public hearing on all of those items that you just listed. So that we can redo them for denial, because they are teed up currently for approval. So we will redo them for denial based on the testimony and the input of the council and direction of the council this evening. So they will come back to you. Um, I think they were recommending the second meeting in February. It would come back and then it would be teed up not for approval, but denial. And you'll vote on it then.
We'll bring back the first meeting in February.
And that'll be your final action.
First meeting in February, okay.
Is it the first?
First meeting in February.
Yes.
There's no reason to wait two meetings.
John, is this the equivalent of tabling this till two weeks and then coming back with new information, or is this a?
No, you're continuing the public hearing, you're continuing the item. Um, and, and it's to give staff an opportunity now prepare denial and finding supporting denial. So the record's clear to everybody involved that it was denied and why it was denied.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Alright, so ninth and pro, ten is gone because of the action we just did. Eleven is in twelve is applicant from Mr. Cruz Divine. That's been continued till the first meeting in February also. We'll move on now. Public comments pertaining to the council item, a three minute timeline per person. This is the consent count, all this, all matters listed on the con. What's that?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks, Zach.
We're gonna wake him up. Damn, I'm hungry too. We're gonna declare conflict, we go to the back, get some food. He said it's some bullshit we could have been just if it was passed, it's gotta have to change it. But you know what? It's okay because they got a year.
We, we, we can hear your comments.
There's all matters listed on consent calendar. I'm sorry. Everybody gets, uh, uh, we're gonna move on here. Sir, I'm not sure why you're standing up there. Alright, consent count, all matters listed on consent count are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion before unless the mayor or any member of the city council may pull an item from the consent counter for discussion prior to council action. A member of the public may address the city council on matters scheduled on the consent counter. Three minute timeline per person applies. Recommended actions, approve items thirteen through eighteen on the consent counter by affirmative roll call vote. Do you wanna pull anything, council?
I move to approve.
Thank you. Excellent call for a vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, need to discussion regarding first beach park design. Using funds from the Clean California Local Program if awarded.
Uh, so, yeah.
Go ahead.
Approximately a year ago, um, uh, Councilor Bell. And, uh, asked that we develop plans for a, what we've called grassy note. Uh, instead of parking in front of between the beach and the nineteenth hole. Uh, Councilor Longacre also asked, uh, in a council request. That we look at park improvements on first and second beach. So we have, uh, had our engineering company. Uh, lay out a number of different scenarios for the plan that's in the pack. And it basically has, uh, in front of the nineteenth hole. A walkway and grant for eighty day purposes. Uh, it's concrete, uh, grass and trees. And I still think we had to minimize the trees in there because of, you don't wanna block the river. Uh, and then further down to the east, there's a, there's a new restroom proposed. There's additional parking and there's children's play. And this is now turned into a one point eight million dollar project. That, that if the state wants to fund, we would accept. But if not, this is not what.
My grassy note was initially.
We don't even, we don't even get to put a schoolbook depository near it.
We can do it.
For one point eight, you would think, not today. It's, uh, wanna be able to get the limber stuff for.
Well, it, it would be a world-class.
Oh, my God.
And then, uh, and then some, that's beautiful.
Have Shakespeare in the park.
That's beautiful.
But.
We're having Shakespeare in the park.
Thanks for paying for it.
Get it, then we'll have a world-class park. But that was, it's gotten beyond what the initial initiative is.
I like it. This is amazing.
Our recommended action would be that you approve the concept plans, authorize the submission, and we will keep you informed.
The grant's coming.
I will.
Alright, is there any discussion from the council?
Beautiful smiles.
Any public input on issue? Close book input, hand?
I'll make a motion that we, um, be happy to accept this and apply for the grant. If they give it to us, we'll gladly take mine.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
No? Any further discussion? Call for the vote?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have very strong.
Okay. Is there a city attorney's report?
Yes, so just briefly, uh, reporting on some of the items that we've been working on. Uh, we've been representing and continue to represent the city in the Rio Buena Vista litigation. Also representing the city in approximately twenty code enforcement receivership matters. Advising the city in connection with land use matters, including the items that you had before you tonight. Advising the city in connection with live scans for individuals that are applying to work in the needles cannabis industry. Um, also assisting the city on contractual matters, labor and employment matters to the extent they arise. Um, also, uh, preparing a, uh, we prepared the proposed amendment. Uh, to the, uh, lease with the chamber that was addressed tonight. And then advising city council members, um, as officials of the city on conflict of interest questions as they arise, and also staff to the extent they have questions. Uh, sit, and then lastly assisting the city with responding to public records act requests.
Thank you. The manager's report?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll be very short on that four items. Um, as John mentioned, uh, uh, on the Rio Buena Vista, I was, um, solution, I was contacted by the homeowners association. I'm gonna meet with them, uh, to find out. Uh, how they can best bring their system up to city standards and then for the, to make the city eligible to take those over. But we will have those discussions. Um, we received the, the letter from the State Water Resources Board. Uh, to allow the drilling of the well. Uh, we are working with a contractor. We'll probably, they'll probably start drilling the well in about ten days to two weeks. We will notify you about a groundbreaking for that well. Um, also, uh, on the automatic metering, uh, project. Uh, they are preparing to do the first installs of the automatic or remote thread. Uh, meters in the city, the electric and water meters. Uh, we're, we're, we're working to overcome a problem to make sure that our financial system is geared to receive the signals from the meters. To where we need to work on that interface and that's a, a big challenge to, uh, our IT folks. Uh, the railroad, uh, underpass, uh, we are a prepared to sign agreements that the, uh, railroad has, uh, has given us. And then oh, uh, there's a, a boy scout who, uh, last weekend burned his Eagle Scout badge. By repainting the restrooms at, at the Jojo Garcia complex with the two ball fields. And, uh, when all the paperwork gets done, uh, I've asked him to come here. So the council can present him that Eagle Scout badge. And that's it. I'd be glad to answer any questions or follow.
Alright, council requests, we're gonna go to Ms. Longacre.
Ah, I don't have any council requests this.
Nice thought in your eyes.
Um, I am going to get with Councilor Bell and organize a cleanup for maybe March. We, we wanna do something big since people are forgetting we clean up the city.
Yeah, that's right.
That's it. That's all I got, you know?
Tony?
Yeah, that's it. Just we need to pick a date and I, if we wanna work with Caltrans, then we'd have to do a Caltrans or the state property. So I'm sure they'd be willing, but that's an off ramp. We wanna do that. Um, I don't know, whatever we think is the best area at this point in time.
You guys can clean out my backyard.
Uh, I just, uh, agree with everyone that, uh, it's a shame that so much money got spent on planning before. Before it came to us and, uh, I do, uh, do hope we do a better job.
Councilman Mayor?
Their report. Have a good night.
Councilmember Wade?
Evans?
Um, Jay Street, three hundred?
Three hundred J.
Three hundred J.
Violet.
Something's being done. Right, yes, sir. I don't think we'll be happy until it's all the way done, so. Um, uh, and I believe you met with Mr. Jones at Morgan on ninety-five, correct?
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, there's, somebody's taking, appears that someone's taking some signs, park, no parking signs. So we're going to add more no parking signs.
And right there, Caltrans, that state right there, the right of way, isn't it?
Yes.
Right, yes. Is there any communication with Caltrans that doing anything there?
I have been, uh, working with Joanna Lopez, who is Jeff Buck's supervisor. About more substantial barriers, because I think we're gonna physically preclude parking. Because otherwise the trucks, the, the sawhorses, what I call them back in the farm days. Uh, they're just pushing those out of the way.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Late in this regard.
Yeah, and, and, cause I travel that road multiple times a day and, uh, it is dangerous when, when there's some, somebody yelling apart there and an accident, accident is just inevitable. That's, it's gonna happen. It's only a matter of time and, uh, and I just pray it's not, I don't, I, I, I pray it never happens, but hopefully Caltrans can do something about it. We can do something about it, work together, get something done there. Um, um, meter reads, and I know you touched on the meters, uh, I've been getting a lot of, um, just saying plates, but, um, should say complaints, but, um, people have been concerned about their, the meter reads have been wrong, including mine. Um, last month I, uh, I got my bill and, um, the city owed me thirteen dollars and fifty-six cents. And I was ecstatic until I said, nah, anyway. I went, I, I went out and compared and I, and there, there have been many other people that have told me that the meter has been read wrong. Some of them on the other side, though.
Right.
And which, which they got bills that were astronomical, uh, so, uh,
Yeah, if anybody has a concern on, uh, on error, uh, we do thirty to fifty.
But, but some people actually think that, oh, wow. Well, okay, and they don't know that it's going to, when it gets read correctly, it's going to come back and they're going to owe a lot of money.
Well, and, and part of it is, Mr. Mayor, by the way, when, when what you're doing during the day is reading a bunch of numbers, it's easy to get dyslexic. So that's why the electronic, the automated is going to be a much better. But yeah, we do a number of read reads, uh, both pro and con, but I'll, I'll bring this up with the filling up.
Alright, thank you, Wade. Ms. Campbell?
Let me go first. Okay, that, I just have some questions and some sort of statements. One, I want to thank Rick for the article that was in the paper two weeks ago going over all of the things that the city has accomplished, because a lot of people don't understand just how much this city has accomplished with the projects, the, the money spent, the roads, what we're doing, water leaks and all the different things. And I sat with Rick and, you know, talked about it, you know, a while back, and he gave me just a list of things just up until, I would think it was up to February. I was just, it was just pages, it was just February. And, you know, my thought is I want the city to provide this information via the newspaper, since we don't have a Facebook page and we don't have, which I think we should have, which something that we can put information out, but you cannot write on. Uh, it's just that it's an information feed, almost like a news feed, to let people know like a, what's happening in needles type thing. I think the city needs something. But the newspaper works great. It's articles, whether it's the city manager, the assistant manager, whether it's the mayor, the vice mayor, or any one of us that does an article on what's going on, what our passions are, what we're working on. Johnny and I carry around little grabbers and trash bags in the car, and I take my handicapped son around picking up trash. You know, and it was really insulting to be told that we don't do anything and we, we don't clean up anything, when especially people have been doing it really. I'm new at it. So I just wanted to thank you for that, because I thought that was really a wonderful article and captured a lot of what the city is doing and that we are making progress. Then we are doing good things, big things. Um, so I'd like to see that happening. Um, I wanted to, I have some status questions, which you may not be able to answer right now, but maybe you can answer later, but the status, uh, the three buildings that are down on Manskers that can't be used ever, the mobiles, until they decide to do the other part of it, Camden Mansker's property. So that's, you know, still just kind of like sitting there. It's, it's not like particularly ugly, but it's not going anywhere. It's kind of one of those things where the extensions or whatever, fourteen years of extensions, but I just, I was kind of curious what was happening.
But you know the problem we've had down at K Street on the underpass?
Right.
Same problem he's having there. There's a right of way through there.
Okay.
He can't get Santa Fe to move on. So that's what he's doing. That's what he's waiting on.
A, a track that hasn't been there in.
Yeah. It's Rocco's left.
Man, I'll date Warren Buffett. Okay, um, then, uh, the, the shopping center with, uh, affordable housing downtown and the old hospital property. That's going to be coming. I know that he got extensions too, due to the pandemic and not being able to, he needed, he asked for a year.
Yeah.
So kind of where, where are we at with that?
We'll get to that.
Okay, um, and then, um, also, um, there are, were permits pulled for housing on Lily Hill, right at Clary Drive on the right, and then the, one's a condo, one's an apartment building, and the water pump station's being moved because of it. Is that still happening? Are they still wanting to build there?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you a status.
Okay, that's it, okay. And, um, okay, um, and I, um, I came in and talked to Rick about this and I, I took it upon myself to go into H Street. Uh, there are people sleeping on the stairs. I know that we can't just go around rousting homeless people and bullying them. But, um, they broke the window. There's wood on the glass because they broke the window after they were told they couldn't be there. And someone dragged a Republic Refuge can recycled onto their property and dumped it out and made it look like horrible. And they're going to get cited. So I went into their business and I said, look, I'm going to bring these pictures to the city. And code enforcement will in fact come here if you don't do it. And I know you did not do this, but you are responsible for your property. So they did go out and clean up all the trash and they, they, they removed the refrigerator box that was dumped there and all that stuff, but the business owner had to do it. And in front of Needles Point Pharmacy, if you drive by every single solitary night, there's four to ten men hanging out there. And if you walk on the sidewalk, it sounds, it smells like, uh, worse than the urinal in a men's room. Because they're using the sidewalk to urinate right in front of the Needles Point Pharmacy and the liquor store. So I really don't know what the answers are to these problems, but this is becoming a bigger problem in the city. And I personally am not feeling comfortable to get out of my car at night to go into the, to that store to buy a lottery ticket or a newspaper. I'll go to Cubs, because I don't want to walk through, by ten homeless men um, to go into the store. I, I just don't want to. Um, and I'm not used to not feeling safe in my town. So that was, so that was that. Um, and then, um, I have been policing the trucks up at the Indian Restaurant, knocking on their doors and saying, there's fifteen feet of red right here. You are parked in the red and we cannot turn in and out and you will be cited. So you cannot park here. I've gone and I spoke to the owner and said, look, just tell your truck drivers, we're not trying to hurt them or starve them, but they can't park in the red. We can get hurt trying to get in and out of there. So, um, I went and, um, I've been being a police officer lately. I'm going to ask them for my paycheck soon. So, um, and that was the, um, I can't read, I can't read my last note that I had, so I just, I'm, I'm hoping that maybe that the gentleman would really like to move his business over to Juicy's, which, that's what I'm, I'm putting out there in the universe. I'm praying for that. It would be, um, yeah. Yeah, just, you know, to be safe. So that, those are.
Strongly discourage it from having interface.
Yeah.
We have trained people, sheriff has trained people.
Okay, fine, with that, there's no further. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.